Okay, board members, everyone can hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Well, good evening and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Eastchester, May 11, 2021, meeting. Usually at this time I go over some of the ground rules and just very briefly, certain items that we conduct when we are meeting regularly in person will not be done tonight. Tonight's meeting will be done remotely. We don't know yet whether June will be remote. It looks like it will be, but that will be announced in advance. Tonight's meeting will be conducted under Robert's Rules of Order, as they all are. And just, I guess, the cliff note on that is that generally, the public will be allowed to speak when recognized. And I want to go over that right now because I want the public to understand how to participate. So if the public would like to make a comment at the public hearing portion of an application, you'll use the raise hand function feature on your computer. If you're calling in from a phone, you'll use star nine. Our deputy town attorney, Robert Tedesco, will acknowledge you and invite you to speak. You'll give your name and address for the record, and you'll have to unmute your microphone, and then you'll be able to proceed. As part of some of the items that we are not able to do remotely, we're not able to call roll tonight. So I'll just let everyone know that we have two items on for resolution. We have three new business items, and we have one application that has been adjourned to possibly the June meeting, but this has been adjourned for this evening. So having said that, we will get right into the meeting. And the first item on for resolution, I make a motion to approve application 21-07. This is 23 Clubway, subject to the following two conditions. One, that the side yard setback to the proposed addition must be increased from eight feet to nine feet, whereas a 12-foot setback is required. And number two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance, the applicant must install seven, eight-and-a-half-foot-tall green giant arborvitae or similar variety along the side property adjacent to the addition. Is there a second to my motion?
A second.
Mr. Cahalan, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Chairman, if you indulge me for one minute. As Margaret is well aware, I would have voted for this application with the eight-foot setback in the arborvitae. It puts me in kind of a precarious position. I'm not going to penalize the applicant. So I will vote in favor of the motion for the approval as presented.
Thank you, Member Miller. Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes with a similar comment to Mr. Miller, that my approval for the application would have only required one condition, and that is the arborvitae, not the change of setback. So that application's been approved five to zero, I'm sorry, with the two conditions. Okay, next item. I make a motion to approve application 22-1462 Vernon Drive. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved five to zero. Okay, now, getting back to the ground rules on new business. So the three matters of new business that are on tonight, they've all been marked submitted. Your documents are part of a public record. They've been reviewed by the board, and in many instances, the board has either been in the vicinity or been on premises. So just so the applicants understand procedurally, you're not under an obligation to sit here and read your entire application or the five-part test. I would ask that you just briefly summarize. You can read it if you want. It won't help or hurt your application. But again, the board is familiar with your application. And procedurally, you will give your presentation. The board has an opportunity to ask questions or comment and make comments. The public will be heard, and then you'll have an opportunity to respond. And the board will then have a final opportunity to ask questions or comments. So starting with new business item number one, this is Two Pasadena Road.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks again, Margaret and the board, for the scheduling accommodations. Very much appreciated. So yes, good evening. My name is Adama Mayorano from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the applicant and owner Cynthia Roberto, we are proposing a one-story addition over an existing non-conforming one-story structure in the rear yard of Two Pasadena Road, which is situated in our 7.5 zoning district. Can I share my screen? Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Yes. So this project has been before you back in 2019. For certain reasons, the applicant did not start the work, obviously with the COVID outbreak. And we're back here today seeking approval again for the same condition as we did present back in 2019. Nothing is changing for the proposed action. Again, it's a one-story addition over an existing one-story structure in the rear yard. The setback that exists today is 14.5 feet. And in our 7.5 zoning district, the rear yard setback is 25 feet, which is required. So we are asking for the 14.5-foot zoning variance to increase that nonconformity because we're building up over that existing structure. Again, this is to increase and make better use of the existing master bedroom. Again, increasing that bedroom closets and master bathroom. You can see here, the dotted line is basically what exists today. You can see here in the pictures as well. In the rear yard, there is very heavy evergreen screening in the rear yard that sort of blocks it from the neighbors. The neighbor in the rear yard is very far away from, they have an oversized lot, so very far away from our proposed dwelling and proposed condition. So the screening and the distance, again, the same points as we brought up back in the prior approval, the same sort of conditions today, and basically the same application, and nothing really that is changing. We're just back again, seeking approval again, because the certain amount of time has passed. Sorry. That really pretty much does it for this.
It would be too easy for me to say that your application's gone to the dogs, right? It would be too easy. Okay, so thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mayorano. And I think this point now will allow the board to ask any questions or comments that they may have. Mr. Cahalan?
None.
Mr. Miller?
Sorry, none.
Mr. Nerzia?
None.
Mr. DiMarco?
None.
I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the matter to the public for a public hearings. There's a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Tedesco, is there anyone from the public that is interested in being heard on this application?
I am checking now if there's, excuse me, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this application or to address the board, please use the raise your hand feature, and I will invite you to unmute yourself. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I don't see any members of the public who wish to address the board on this application.
Okay, thank you. So I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Cahalan, anything on this application?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Nerzia?
No.
Mr. DiMarco?
No.
All I have to say for the application is that the application in 2019 met the five-part test. The application now meets the five-part test. I see no other mitigating factors. So I thank you for your application, Mr. Mayorano, and I make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayorano.
Thank you again. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Okay, new business item number two, 84 Lakeview Avenue, application 21-18.
Good evening, members of the board. Oh, I'll pause, fix my video. Hi, good evening, members of the board. I wanted to say thank you so much for having me this evening.
Thank you for your presentation. So you may proceed.
I'm just sharing my screen now. The, this is for the application at 84 Lakeview Avenue. I'm Catherine LaValbeau, the architect presenting for applicants Daniel Rosenberg and Katie Wilber. The Rosenbergs are proposing to renovate an existing garage to a family room. They, this will allow the applicant's father, who is living with a disability due to a stroke, to have a better level of accessibility to their home when he visits with his grandchildren. The modification will improve the quality of life for their family, but it requires the applicant to seek relief from this board on the R5 zone requirement for two parking spaces for single-family homes. The driveway is capable of providing off-street parking in a number of formats. It's, you're actually able to do two cars in tandem and two cars side by side. However, in tandem, the parking space that would be closest to the street is actually within the town right-of-way. The driveway itself is just under 40 feet long, but of that, 19 and a half feet are in the town right-of-way. And then if you put them side by side, they are smaller than the prescribed zoning regulations. This is why the applicant's seeking to have the resolution of variance to allow one parking space at Lakeview. We took some photos of areas, photos in the neighborhood. You can see that it's somewhat, this would be somewhat in keeping with what's occurring already in the neighborhood, where there are cars parked relatively just off the driveway. The, so this, we think this will probably continue to be in keeping with the neighborhood. Off-street parking for cars will be safe and possible. So we're here to respectfully request consideration from your board.
Thank you for your presentation. At this juncture, we'll have the board ask any questions or make comments. Mr. Cahalan?
I have none.
Mr. Miller?
None.
Mr. Nerzia?
None.
Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
I have nothing at this time. I make a motion to open this matter, application to the public for public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Tedesco, is there anyone interested in being heard on this application?
Members of the public, if there are any attendees who wish to address the board on this application, please use the raise your hand feature, and I'll invite you to unmute yourself. At this time, Mr. Chairman, there does not appear to be any members of the public who wish to address the board on this application.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tedesco. I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Cahalan, any comments or questions?
None.
Mr. Miller?
Still none.
Mr. Nerzia?
None.
Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
And I just have the comment that your presentation was clear and concise, and you've, from my purposes, adequately addressed the five-part test. I make a motion to resolve this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, last item on our calendar under new business and for the evening is 21-13. This is Forest Sprague Road.
Okay. Just bear with me one minute. Okay, they're coming on.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. This is Thomas Haynes from Haynes Architecture. I hope you're all well tonight. I am the architect of record for Mr. Thomas Messina with the project located at Forest Sprague Road. Mr. Messina is on the Zoom currently, and he will be leading the presentation tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Margaret, is it possible to please give Mr. Messina the floor to make a presentation?
Sure, of course. He's been promoted, so he can just start when he's ready.
Okay, great. Sorry, I don't see him here soon.
Okay.
That's great. Oh, there he is. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom, and thanks, Margaret. And thank you, board, for allowing me to present this important matter to you today. My name is Thomas Messina. I am the homeowner at Forest Sprague Road, and I'm here today to request five variances. Let me see if I can try to share my screen here. Okay. I take it everyone can see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, great. And just to give you a little background on myself, I, my wife and I have resided in Eastchester since 2005 at Forest Sprague Road. Prior to that, we were in Tuckahoe, and we both grew up in Westchester. My wife in Yonkers, myself in Mount Vernon. We have two daughters, 13 and 10, that attend the public schools in Eastchester. But anyway, let me get to this, to the request here. So I'm requesting five variances. I trust you, you've all read through this. Just quickly, two of the variances have to do with a spa hot tub in my backyard, the rear and the side setbacks. Two variances regarding a shed side setback and setback from my house. And the last variance regarding impervious space, upping it from the 2765 square feet to 3,369 square feet. I wanted to present to you today because I think it was a little over a year ago, I was in front of you again, asking for variances. Originally, my wife and I wanted to create a screened-in porch in our backyard and to put in pavers to address some water issues that we had. At that time, in January of 2020, we asked for three variances. Two of the variances had to do with the screen-in porch. One of the variances had to do with the impervious surface coverage. In February of 2020, the board approved the three variances. My wife and I were all set to submit a permit to build the screen-in porch. However, this is now in, you know, April of 2020, and we were in the midst of COVID. And, you know, we were concerned that we may not be able to use our screen-in porch because it was connected to our house. And, you know, there's all sorts of uncertainties at the time. And so we decided, just instead of putting in the screen-in porch just to convert our existing wooden deck to a trex deck, we did continue to put in the pavers. Originally, we had planned to put in two drywells as a condition of the approval by the board of the variance. And that was, you know, due to, you know, the amount of impervious space and the coverage of the screen-in porch. And even though we didn't build the screen-in porch and we just converted our existing wooden deck to a trex deck, we decided to keep those two drywells in the backyard. And we actually went in and included a third one. And we did this for a number of reasons. I'm not a big fan of water, and I know my neighbors aren't either. And so we wanted to be really sure that we wouldn't have a water issue in the backyard. So we have those three drywells in today. Two of them are operational. One of them could be made operational if need be. But anyway, my, you know, we were going through the build phase. You know, there was all sorts of delays due to COVID. But sometime in mid-June, our contractor began. It was during this whole process, my wife and I were going back and forth. We really didn't know what we wanted to do at this point. You know, there was issues with Lake Isle. I mean, we were all went through. We didn't know what the future was going to hold. And so, you know, unbeknownst to my wife and I, around the variances and the permit requirements around a shed and a hot tub, we had that installed. And, you know, we are here today to address that. I wanted to take the board through just quickly, just a couple of slides. So what I have here is sort of the way that the layout is. Again, I tried to do this, did this myself. This is as close to sort of scale as possible. But the idea is that in the corner on the left here, we have the spa and the shed. If I were to legalize it without the variances, I would have to move the spa 10 feet from the house and also 10 feet from the property line. I do have enough room for it. And I'd also have to offset the shed at least 10 feet from the house, as well as five feet from the property lines. And so we get this sort of weird arrangement here, which I think is suboptimal to not only myself, but to my neighbors. And I'll explain. If I were to have to move my spa here and to have to remove that one drywell that we have in reserve in the event there's any water issues that we may experience in the future, because we'd have to put in a concrete slab, which is, you know, I don't think optimal for anyone. In addition, by moving everything to the center line, what was sort of hidden from view on the side is now sort of in the sightline of all the neighbors. Again, something I think is suboptimal to everyone. And so what I wanted to do is, I understand people have privacy and visibility issues, aesthetic issues. I don't want to hurt the property values of my house, nor do I want to do that of my neighbors. And so what I propose is to kind of improve the privacy of the backyard. Currently today, and I'm going to go back to this slide, on the left and right, I have, you know, sort of these evergreens, which obstruct view from the left and the right property line. What I propose is, if the board were to approve the variances that I request, I would, you know, install 11 fully grown evergreen trees, at least 16 feet high, which I believe would improve the privacy, not only for my family, but also for the family to the rear of my property. And so on that note, I pass it back to the board for any questions you may have, or the public for that matter.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I'll see if the board has any questions or comments. We'll start with Mr. Cahalan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have several. I visited the site on Saturday and Sunday. You know, I don't think COVID was the reason you did this. That shed is just not safe where it's located. You can't get around it. The spa is right up against the fence. The gazebo, you know, we have this thing called accessory structures. It's a hindrance to the neighbor. I don't see how the arborvitae would help that much, you know, until they're about 14 feet in height. You know, your argument as putting in the third well, you don't need a concrete slab. The pavers would suffice to put the hot tub on, as far as I know. Marg, would that be correct?
Yeah, Margaret.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The hot tub. Does it need a slab? It could go right on the pavers, correct?
I can't answer that question. I mean, typically, it's reviewed by our plan reviewer with regard to if it's properly installed and constructed.
Okay. But it's still, it's solid.
Mr. Cahalan, if I may, this is Tom.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I thought I had to.
Let me interrupt everyone before we have some cross-talk, or we'd have a problem. Mr. Cahalan, make your comment, and then I'll allow the applicant after the board to reply. So just make some notes, Mr. Messina. Go ahead, Mr. Cahalan.
So, you know, every square foot has been used with the pavers. And don't get me wrong, they look beautiful, but where's the green space? You have a small little front lawn that is your only green space in the whole town. We don't have this, you know? This is just not what the town is about. You increased your square footage by another 68 square feet from the original approval. That's a lot of square footage, you know? It just is. And the drywells are just a solution to the impervious surface. Really, what you should be, what we want is grass and the water to go away naturally. You know, I think you've taken advantage and you're asking for forgiveness on a situation that was self-created. As far as the test goes, that last piece is terrible. There's no way around it. This wasn't self-created. And I think you're imposing on your neighbors on both sides. I mean, having gone back there, I mean, don't get me wrong. Like I said, it's beautiful, but you have a basketball net by the side of the steps. That's there. I mean, you know, I mean, that's something that, you know, I guess the kids play with, which is great. But the gazebo is huge. It's like another shelter back there. That's right up against the property line. And I'm sure, you know, that is there for your convenience and not, you didn't think about your neighbors because it should be closer to your house if you were concerned about the neighbors. Same thing with the spa. The shed, to me, is a hazard because there's just no way around it. So that's my comments at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cahalan. Mr. Miller?
No comments.
Mr. Nerzia?
Just following up on Mr. Cahalan's comments. I mean, I guess my general concerns are, if the layout of this backyard were different or if that house to your rear, which is actually his side, was situated differently, I guess I'd be less concerned. But given that everything is just kind of like put in here very closely and very tightly, I appreciate the fact that you offered to put the plantings. But my concerns are, again, just echoing Mr. Cahalan's.
Thank you, Mr. Nerzia. Mr. DiMarco?
No questions.
Okay. And I think the commentary seems to be surrounding also the substantiality of the request and also the cumulative substantiality. But I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to reply to certain comments, and then we'll move on to the public. So if the applicant would like to reply, please do so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. And I thank you, board members, for your comments. A couple of things, and, you know, Thomas Haynes, my architect, can correct me if I'm wrong. But the pavers could, is my understanding, hold the weight of the spa. It's the drywell that's underneath that would have to be removed in order for the base to be considered sound. So that's sort of the concern there. Regarding the, my proposal of the trees, they would be fully grown trees. And I would incur the expense of those fully grown trees. I think many of you are probably aware that a 16-to-18-foot fully grown tree is quite expensive. But I would incur that cost to, again, help with some of the visibility from, again, my rear neighbor. And nonetheless, if the variances aren't approved, you know, the spa and the shed could legally still be in my backyard under, obviously, some modified arrangement of the spa and the shed. I just think that, again, this, the way that this setup is, is most beneficial to my neighbors and to myself. But I do, again, recognize the board's concern, and I do not try to, you know, minimize that in any way.
Okay, thank you. I mean, so.
I'm sorry. May I please just add a couple of comments to this? This is Thomas Haynes from Haynes.
Sure, Mr. Haynes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. You know, I just wanted to point out a few things here. Again, you know, I think it's important that we understand and really take into consideration the importance of Mr. Messina's previous slide that showed the location of the spa and the shed if he were to be in compliance, right? So he had made this presentation here with his own PowerPoint. And you can see in this slide here to the right that he's showing two alternate locations for the shed and the spa. If Mr. Messina has proposed these in these locations, in my opinion, and I think that the board would probably share this opinion, the locations of these, the shed and the spa, would be more, I guess, disruptive to the neighbor's views or obtusive to the neighbor's views, seeing that the shed, which has a higher roof to it, would be. seeing that the shed, which has a higher roof to it, would be immediately adjacent to the existing dwelling located behind it. Where Mr. Messina located his shed currently, it's nestled between the trex deck and the left side property line, where there's substantial screening between his, his dwelling and the house or the property to the left-hand side. So the shed tucked in that location does not really affect the adjacent neighbors. In addition, the spa location, where it would be fully compliant if it was located in the center, he would have additional issues with safety, with height requirements for pools and spas, where the spa in that location, although it would meet zoning code requirements, it would not meet building code requirements unless he had a much higher railing around his trex deck, because one could, in theory, or child or what have you, could hop off of the trex deck into the spa. So that becomes a safety hazard. It's also in that location would be more in line with the rear property, which would be viewing right down into the spa. I think that the screening that Mr. Messina proposes along the rear would be a substantial improvement in creating green space and providing screening between the adjacent dwelling and the property of the subject now. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out that, that the proposed gazebo, which is existing in that location, does not need variances or is, it is fully compliant with zoning requirements. So whether the fact that Mr. Messina chose to put his gazebo in that location or closer to his home, he's fully compliant. So it's a moot point to even discuss the gazebo at this point. If that's something that I think the neighbors disapprove of, and again, I'm not putting words in their mouth, I don't know that they do, but I know that Mr. Cahalan had, had brought that to the board's attention and to the public's attention. Again, I feel that that's a moot point because it's, it's fully compliant here. We're not asking for a variance on the gazebo. So with those points said, you know, I understand that we're, we're asking for a minimal increase of impervious area to what was formally approved. Essentially, we're asking for an increase of essentially the shed size. Mr. Messina is entitled to have a shed. He's entitled to have a spa. He's entitled to have a gazebo. So at this point, I would really request that the board give consideration to these points and understand that, you know, had he moved these items into locations that were fully compliant, you know, I, I personally feel that they, that the adjacent property immediately behind them would not be happy with those locations, even though they were fully compliant.
Okay, thank you for your reply, and just as a point of order, one moment, please. As a point of order, I just want to make a note that the gazebo is not before us, and it is not an issue at this time. Who is requesting recognition? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Cahalan, please proceed.
So I, I'm not a botanist or a landscaper, but putting in full grown avarites in that five-foot space, will they even fit? The root base has got to be bigger than that. I mean, are they going to fit at that, in that location, honestly?
Well, okay, so, please.
That's my first question.
Okay, go ahead.
My second question is, we still have, the big, the big, the big issue here is, you know, we're being directed in a way they want us to see this application. Yes, they could have done this, but they chose not to. So now they're asking for additional variances. But let's not forget, the big thing here is the impervious surface. That's a huge amount of impervious surface that they're asking for. You know, they chose to do the third well for their own benefit, which is great, and their neighbors. But, you know, they could have put that stuff, and when they built the deck, to Mr. Hayes's argument, you couldn't, if you knew you were going to place it there, you would have put a higher railing if you had to. So, you know, those arguments to me don't hold water. So I want to stay focused on, you know, what they did is one thing, what they could have done was another thing. We're here because of what they did, not what they didn't do. And the underlying concern is the impervious surface. And yes, the, the gazebo is not in question, but it's, 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 it's there for the neighbors, whether it's in question or not, so.
Well, I want to rest for a second. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Tedesco?
I, I just, there is currently a case pending for a lot of these improvements that were done without permits in court. And also, it's, the part of the issue is the gazebo required a permit that was not obtained, and there are setback requirements for a structure back there. Whether it's part of this application or not at this point in time, I don't know why it wasn't included, but there is a current violation for that structure, and it's, it's more than just a covering. My understanding, and I've seen photographs, is that it is an enclosed, a full enclosure. That it is, it's an illegal structure that is in violation of the setback requirements.
It's, it's not actually.
It's not in violation, I'm sorry. I was going to reply to that, Mrs. Yuley. If you'd like to, please proceed.
Yeah, the, the gazebo actually does meet the setback requirements. And with regard to, so Mr. Tedesco is correct in that it required a permit. So the violation in court with regard to the gazebo is with regard to the fact that the permit had not been obtained. But it actually does meet the setback requirements for accessory structures, and the building department has zero discretion with regard to modifying those setbacks if they meet the zoning requirements. There might have been some misunderstanding initially, but the survey confirmed that the gazebo does meet the setback requirements.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuley. Okay, so at this more, at this point, I have, I'm making a motion to open this application to the public for a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Tedesco?
Yes, there is a member of the public that wishes to address the board. It says, Peter, I'm going to invite you to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Identify yourself with your name and address and address the board.
Yes, my name is Peter Telesco. I live at 892 Post Road. I am the house behind the Forsprague Road property. I would like to thank everyone for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I have a prepared statement because I'm not comfortable talking in public like this, especially not comfortable being put in a position where I have to defend my property, defend my happiness, defend my wife's health. So this is, it's a touchy situation for me. I'm going to do the best I can to get through this. And then I do want to respond to some of the comments that were made by the property owner and by the architect. So I'll start with by saying, last year, the homeowner submitted an application to you, which was approved with, and variances were granted. The work done far exceeds that which was approved. It turns out we were deceived, and I was not given a chance to voice my concerns. You now have before you an application to approve and legalize a project, which was completed illegally without proper permits. The application includes a drawing, which has nice straight lines on it, small rectangular boxes depicting a roofed area, which is in fact a gazebo, a hot tub and a shed. It has small numbers with arrows added to it. They all look quite innocent on the drawing, and you may be inclined to say, it's not so bad. I think I'll vote to approve this. I can give you another perspective. I've lived with this since last fall. I can tell you what a nuisance it is to my life. You can't use half of my house when that gazebo was in use between the fire pit and the cigar smoke. Comes right into my windows. The, the roof vent in that gazebo is even with my bedroom window. You can't have a bedroom window open when that's in use. You can't have the other windows open when they're in the hot tub, which are right below two other rooms of my home. So I think it's unacceptable. As you can see, this is a backyard to side yard situation, and it makes a world of difference. My side yard is seven feet wide. The plan also can't tell you how disruptive and potentially dangerous it is to me as a neighbor. The structures had been in full use last year, as I said, and I can tell you for a fact it is both. I can't open the windows on that side of my home while either structure is in use. I find it telling that the shed was placed next to their home, but the hot tub was placed as far away from their home as possible. I have been awakened on at least three different occasions, as late as 11:40 PM all week nights, when the hot tub is being closed for the evening. The gazebo, as I said, has a fire pit in it, which makes it a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365-day social gathering room. To call it a roof structure or an accessory structure is just not accurate. This is a detached addition to their home. It's particularly disturbing to me since it is approximately 12 feet from my home, and the roof vent is directly under a bedroom window. It has been used as a cigar lounge. The smoke and odors rise and egg through the roof vent and are in my home within seconds if the windows are open. My wife is asthmatic, and I take this very seriously. This is a very dangerous situation. No one should have the right to make my home dangerous or toxic to my wife. I do have a question, though. The approved application allowed for an enlarged and enclosed deck attached to the home. Why was it decided to cancel and build a gazebo instead? Now, I heard your answer tonight, so it kind of was answered to me, but I'm going to ask the question again anyway. What I believe is, it's absolutely because they don't want a fire pit or cigars close to their home. So let's put them far away from our home as possible. And, you know, tough baloney for me if that's where it ends up. So in closing, I implore you to consider these facts. The work was done illegally after permits were granted for a different scope of work. I also, please consider, the homeowner is not asking for variances to have the structures moved closer to his home than permitted. He did just the opposite. He placed the party venues as far away from his home as possible. And most importantly, these two party structures are closer to my home than to their own home. There's an old saying, it is easier to ask for forgiveness than to ask for permission. I certainly hope that is not true in this case. I would like to thank you all for your time, and I would like to just address one, one thing they brought up. I was never going to bring up COVID. I don't, I don't think to bring up COVID in a trivial situation is fair. COVID has devastated many, many people. I'm going to tell you my issues with COVID. My issue with COVID is not, do I have a swimming pool that I can swim in? My issue with COVID is that since last year, when COVID began, my wife and I have lost 22 people to COVID, 22. You can't make that number up. It started on my birthday. A dear friend of mine passed away from COVID. You probably all know Glenn Bolito, former town councilman in the town of Eastchester. Started with that, and it ended on March 12th of this year. My wife's cousin, Father John Grinsel, passed away from COVID. Somehow, my laptop got locked out, so you're not able to see me. I wanted to provide you pictures of what my house looked like on the night of March 12th. The property at Forsprague Road had an outdoor party. They had their back lights on. The side yard of my house was lit up like a movie set. Couldn't sleep. No way you could sleep in my house. My wife and her pajamas went outside, and she took pictures of this. And I'm going to tell you, I wish I could show you the pictures now. I only wish that we were able to see them. I will email them to anybody that wants to see them, but I don't know who in their right mind would think this is appropriate, to sit in their backyard illuminating the entire side of, of their neighbor's homes. I have a video of the fire pit burning with the embers coming out of the, the roof vent. I have that. I have audio of 11, 10:56 at night, the conversations, if you want to call it that, coming out of that property, 10:56 at night. As I said, COVID affected me just as much as, as them. I'm not worried about a pool. I'm worried about keeping my wife alive. You're going to now put her at risk of an asthma attack? That I have to take her to the hospital during times of COVID? I have a friend of mine who went to the hospital during time of COVID. He wasn't feeling well. He never came home. He contracted COVID while he was there, and he passed away. No one has the right to put my wife's life in jeopardy while she's sitting in her own room, in her own home. And I feel adamant about this, and I feel terrible that this is what it's come to, but I just think there's been no consideration given to me as a homeowner, and I think there has to be some protection for me as a homeowner that states that you can't have a gazebo with a fire pit that you use to smoke, whatever you're smoking in there, closer to my home than to your own. And that, that to me is, is the telling, the telling statistic there. It's closer to my home than to theirs. And as far as, well, we'll put up Cypress now. You're only offering that now, why? Because you got caught, because you did all this work illegally. Now to try and rectify it, we'll put it up. Why didn't you do it when you were doing this work? If you were so concerned about the neighbors? And you don't want to move the hot tub because, well, then more people will see it. But it's okay that I have to see this entire setup from three rooms of my house. Actually, maybe four rooms of my, of my house. It's just not right. I am asking this board for your help. You're the only people that can help me. This is an inappropriate request. It's an inappropriate project, and I do need your help. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Telesco. Mr. Tedesco, is there anyone else from the public that would like to be heard?
One second, I'm checking. At this time, if there is anyone who would like to address the board, please raise your hand. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I don't see any hands raised indicating any members of the public that wish to address the board on this application.
Okay. Seeing no one further, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Cahalan, any further commentary, any questions?
I, I mean, I just think that, you know, to legalize this, they should move the structures and get them, get them the right setbacks. And I still have a problem with the impervious surface. That is, you know, one of the serious variances. They were given a lot of latitude with the previous one. To take 68 square feet more to me is just being not fair. You know, and, and I failed to mention, I mean, they have a retaining wall back there that's four feet, with a 10-foot, with another six-foot fence on top of it. So you're basically looking at 10 feet. And the neighbor has a 10-foot problem, you know, screened in, and he's still complaining about privacy. So, you know, I, I think there's some validity to this, for sure.
Okay, Mr. Cahalan, thank you. Mr. Miller?
No questions, more comments.
Okay, Mr. Nerzia, anything?
Actually, my only comment right now is that, for full disclosure, my father-in-law used to be a member of the Eastchester Italian American Club, and the neighbor to the rear, Mr. Telesco, was a member. And I have interacted with him prior to this, on a social setting on several occasions. So I just want to mention that, but that won't affect my ability to deal with this impartially.
Thank you, Mr. Nerzia. Mr. DiMarco, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have anything further than the comments were previously made. So I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I say one last thing?
Sure, go ahead, proceed.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I really appreciate Mr. Peter's comments.
Who is Peter? Who is Peter you're referring to?
Oh, the, I, I think the individual, my neighbor.
Okay, oh, this is a board member named Peter Nerzia.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, a couple of things. I was not aware of this, that it was bothering this, this much. I, I, he never spoke to me about any of this and his concerns. I would, I would have certainly heard him out. My first time getting aware of this was a notice from the inspector that said I exceeded my impervious surface allowance. And, you know, it's been, you know, a long time coming to get here, and additional things have come out. But that's just because we were doing our due diligence. Again, I, I know that people think that I've gone about this, you know, to potentially upset my neighbor maybe, or whatever it may be, but that's not the intention. Regarding the, the lights on March 12th, I've had floodlights in the back that were central-driven. And, you know, they've been there for 12 years. I haven't had comments, and maybe because we haven't used our backyard, it's never been an issue. But we were immediately notified by, by the inspector that it's a concern, it's in violation. And, you know, three days later, it was fixed. So, you know, that won't happen again, and I didn't even know it was an issue. I have cameras, they, they went, they go off for 75 seconds, and I looked over the two, multiple periods, and they don't go off that often. And maybe it was just that night, and his, his wife wasn't feeling well. I, I don't know, but in, in, in second, I, again, the placement of, of the, the, the structures were total, they weren't based upon annoying my neighbor. They were, I mean, if you look at it, it just, they just seem to fit the best in, in that, in that space. And the, the fire pit is a, is a propane mobile thing. It doesn't have flares. If there's flares, they're coming from my cigars and, and, you know, I'm, everything's legal back there. It's, we, we, I smoke cigars. I probably smoke cigars once a week. I've had people there maybe three or four times they've had cigars. It's, it's, you know, it's what you do, you know? But I don't want to hurt his wife, but I also want to be able to enjoy the property that I have. And I haven't enjoyed it for 15 years. For 15 years, I couldn't use my back. For 15 years, I couldn't use my backyard because it was, it was, it was a swimming pool. Okay? And hence, the reason we have all those drains and the impervious surface. And it was grass and it, you know, it didn't go anywhere. That grass, it was all grass. I have video. I've shared it with Margaret in the previous variants. It was, I mean, if you look at it, it's a serious, it's a swimming pool. And we haven't had any water and I haven't heard Mr. Telesco, who was here last time, who, who expressed his concern about water, say he has a water problem. So I went out of my way to address his earlier concern and I, it would have been nice if he had come to me and had said something about some of the layouts of my backyard. And we could have talked about it. And I would have legalized it anyway. I wasn't even aware of it. But, you know, that's sort of where I stand with that. And again, I don't want to, I'm not here to upset my neighbor or I never intended to. I hadn't heard from my neighbor in 16 years, but I haven't also hadn't used my backyard either. So anyway, that's, that's sort of my closing statement.
Yeah, well, you could rest assured, as you probably determined from the last time, that you, your application will be judged. There's nothing is personal here. There's an old maxim this board goes by and that is, we review the application, not the applicant. So whatever is the animus or dynamics between neighbors does not factor into our review of an application. So having said that, I make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the next meeting.
I just wanted, I just wanted to put something out there. I just noticed that Mr., I guess Peter, the neighbor's hand went up, but the public hearing is now closed.
And it, and it will remain, and will remain closed. So this is my third attempt at making a motion that under Robert's rules, I really should be able to make, so I'm going to make it again. I make a motion to adjourn this matter, this application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. So just as a note, the next meeting will be Tuesday, excuse me. The June meeting will be Tuesday, June 8th. I now make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.